Good evening and welcome to the Selectments Meeting for April 4th, 2023 at 6 o'clock. Actually, it's 6:08. May I have a roll call, please?
We're on, Cal present.
Just Sexton Duranian present. And I'd like to take a moment for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Apply allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic. For which is canon, one nation, with your God, with your people, with liberty. Also like to thank all the men and women who served our country, those in the past and in present. Tonight's meeting is going to be recorded. And I did want to mention that we had an error with the Zoom address, but I do see people have found the new address. But it, the, we had a previous agenda that had the, an old Zoom address. It was corrected today. But we were going live anyway, so it, and this is for convenience, so it does look like people did get that. Chairman's additions and deletions, I do have a couple. I'd like to add 4.8 to vote to set the election. And I'd like to also add 4.9 to review and approve the library. There's a library job description. We'll talk about that when we get to it. That would be 4.9. Is there anything else for you? Eric, you're all set. Okay. I am going to go to review and approve the meeting minutes. So, do you want to help me move that?
Sure. I have made a motion to approve the minutes for 3:07, 2023.
One second. Is Scratchin' on those?
Yeah, I, I have one change that I'd like to make. It's on page two, towards the top, in the Townsend Affordable Health and Trust part. The Townsend Affordable Health and Trust, it should say, is not part of the ECO that's in town. And next name will be person like that. That's fine. Just put a "not" in there because that is on the, yeah, yeah. So that's the only change I have.
Yeah, I think I have nothing on there. Thank you, not. So, all those in favor?
With the change?
Yes.
Working with the change?
Yeah.
Fine.
Right.
Alright, so yeah.
3.7.
Let me go on. To, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for 3:11, 2023.
In a second.
And I do have, I meant to put this in. So on the, before the 1 o'clock remaining General Government part, should we put in a, Teresa left the meeting at that point? Does that need to be noted? I didn't note it, but...
Depends on whether there are subsequent votes.
Well, the subsequent vote is adjournment.
I don't think it's necessary to note that she left the meeting. The only thing that happened is...
Well, we did, we didn't take any votes. We discussed, but we didn't take any.
It's not necessary to, I mean, you certainly do, I would have thought.
And I'm lucky to leave it out then, because it doesn't, it doesn't farm it all.
Yeah, there's nothing.
I, I thought about when I was looking through, that I thought, oh, I should have put that in. You know, okay, so. So that's my own mild of change, but of course I wrote them. Do you have any changes? Pretty much I used my, and I went through, there was a lot more said, but there were no votes taken other than the adjournment.
It was just in the, it's got, anyway, some of it, yeah.
So.
No, I'm good with that.
So I did put in little pretty things with, that I had written down as I was going through, but nothing.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll put that on letterhead, correct?
Sorry, I don't know that, for whatever reason, I don't have to compare. I think we should add it later.
Yeah.
Definitely.
And then we'll leave minutes for 3:28 for next meeting.
So, does that mean we're caught up? The minute? That's, that is pretty exciting.
18 minutes? Do we have a moment of, moment of silence for getting over there? Yeah, certainly. Rames is working very hard on minutes.
Yeah.
Speaking of moment of silence, would you want to have moment of silence for?
Sure.
Me and?
No, I thought that we could talk about that later in the meeting.
Okay. I just wanted to.
I need to do a posting, when, when we do liaison report, I'm going to talk about the emergency fitness funds thing a little bit.
We can do it then.
We can do it then, because there needs to be a public thing.
Let's see, let's jump down to 4.1 to vote to accept the petition for acceptance of Cooperage Way and Harbor Trace Road. You want to start off the conversation there?
Sure, this is something that I think has been in front of the board before. The subdivision of Cooperage Way and Harbor Trace Road. Those two roads are in different states of paving. According to the Highway Department, Cooperage is in an acceptable state of paving at the moment to be accepted, according to Highway. And so that, there were some clerical errors in the previous application that didn't go on last year's Annual Town Meeting.
Correct.
Harbor Trace Road is a little bit different situation. This is one where the, the town through the Water Department is actually going to pave this road up to town standards as part of the, the water treatment plant project. And in order to do so, however, we do need to have the road be accepted. So, we are going to be accepting that road, you know, understanding the town itself is going to be the one that brings it up to acceptable standards, but that has to happen before the project can start to work.
Correct.
So, we got the information from the, from the applicant, the same information they provided last year, although their clarify has been corrected.
I, I thought there needed to be a road plan that showed distances on the side or whatever, and this and that of the road plan. Oh, it is there, thank you.
I do believe that.
I thought, yeah, is that part of the?
Yeah, it is, yeah.
The OSPD, okay.
There's an open space preservation part of it too.
And this was accessible to?
Yeah, so the Highway Department, yes. And so we will be scheduling public hearings, a joint public hearing for the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen on the 18th.
Oh, that's the joint meeting?
Yeah.
I was wondering that.
But that's the, the reason for the joint meeting is to, in, in order, the Planning Board has to approve it and recommend approval to the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen has to, to vote to put it on the warrant.
Right.
And so we, it's actually on the warrant as placeholder. If for some reason it doesn't get through, the, the, the board doesn't put it on the warrant, we'll just delete it at the time of the meeting.
Absolutely.
Yep, but this is just accepting it and then putting it out for a public, for a public hearing.
Right. I mean, this is where our Planning Board experience kind of goes right in. But I was very happy to see all of the detail and the maps and stuff too, so that will, that gets a complete package. Yeah, I was concerned the roads may have been in a, you know, a more a worse state, but they're not, they're not as bad as they thought.
And I think Har, again, Harbor Trace, we know is going to get completely redone to town.
Correct.
So that's why we can, and that's already been part of the plan.
While in routine, I'm looking to accept the petition.
I move that we accept the petition for the acceptance of Cooperage Way and Harbor Trace Road and Town Law.
In, I will second that.
And just note, the, the public hearing on these will be on the 18th.
Noted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Good. That will be even. 4.2, vote to finalize the special town meeting and the annual town meeting warrants. How would you like to go about this, Eric?
So I think we should probably, the easiest one is going to be this, the special town meeting.
Okay. So I'm thinking if we do the special town meeting, that should bring us to?
Well, probably bring us to our point.
Yeah.
And I'll just note for the record, there's nothing on here that the board hasn't already seen. There's nothing new that wasn't already on the special town meeting from, I don't believe. So this, Article 1 is the, the reports of the, of any boards or committees.
Can I? Go ahead.
Article 2 is to appropriate the, the fourth quarter of FY22 PEG Act receipt.
Okay, so here is my question on that. My understanding has always been that that needs to be a specific dollar figure. Is, is that, or is that not true? I thought it did.
I can double check.
Because I all of the past year, it has been.
Sure, I mean, the, so, whether it has to be, well, so I can put that number in there, the knowable number, we got the check from, from Comcast, so I can just.
Yeah, this is for a year ago.
Yeah. Long time ago.
Yeah, so I I thought it had to be specific.
Yeah, it's 43,000 something, I believe, but I'll put that exactly right.
That's all I wanted to say on that one.
Article 3 is to change the, the error from the, from the annual town meeting. So that we're all familiar with that one. Article 4 is to reallocate an earlier town meeting allotment to.
That was the rule.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Article 5 is the $29,000 for the general, increase in general insurance costs that we weren't aware of until after town meeting, even noted. But it didn't voted. Article 6 is the $35,000 for that energy cost. Article 7 is the increase in the accounting services line. Article 8 is the $7,500 for the heating and AC unit, the town's black ball.
I, I never yet talked about that before. I was wondering if RIS and Jeneering had looked at that?
Yeah, so my understanding is that this is not something that they would, or don't get a fund after it's back and. The $10,000 for the canceling library roof.
Okay, same.
This is, yeah, so this is actually, Rob is working with the, with the contractor who installed the roof to, to see if any of the leaky areas are under warranty or can be is the responsibility of the contractor as opposed to the building owner.
And, and what about?
It's not fleshed out yet.
Well, there was some no, it's not, they, they, there was a request from folks, not Rob, it was a request of Rob, that rather than do any kind of investigative work, the first thing they do is they change the tiles to see if you can isolate the locations of the leaks. Sorry. So that happened, and now that the leaks have been isolated and the contractor has been called, it's entirely possible that we'll have an answer to this before town meeting, and if so, we can just remove this from the, the town meeting, if, if, if it's determined that they're covered by whatever. The $11,000 is for the, the revamp and update of the town website. Article 11 is cemetery and parks that doesn't, impacting their internal funds, just transferring from the the lots into the cemetery count. Article 12 is the first of a few Water Department financial articles. I'm sure if you look at it, the, these terms will start to come back to you, the ground penetrating radar unit and the bike using machine. But in short, they didn't need, need the money for the bike using machine, that they're going to reassign that to get a ground penetrating radar unit. They're part of a ground penetrating radar unit with that. Those ones. And then there, they had extra money from the plotter. They had been to that, some of that on the ground penetrating radar unit, number 13. And then the remaining amount for the ground penetrating radar is going to come in at number 40. Article 15 is the transfer from Water Enterprise retained earnings, the $50,000 for the, the, the GADA system, which is the operating software for the Water Department. Oh, and then I apologize, Article 16 is the new article. That's the free cash to, to cover stymied deficits. That number is in yellow right now. I should have the exact number shortly. I just have to confirm with the, the accountant and, and Katie over in Highway, that all of their expenses have been are on, are warranted and paid, and that are, have been actually taken out of the account before we get to the final number.
Okay, so right now on the recapture sheet is 191, 221.
Yeah, the 198 was just left there from last year.
Oh, okay.
I did, didn't change the number from last year yet. So on the recapture sheet, it was 191. That's what it was as of 3:14.
The last snowstorm or right before the last?
Right before the last. But I mean, our largest expenses are salt. So, that, that, that salt line, they didn't buy any more salt since that time. It's just the expenses for, for overtime.
Laboring.
But yeah, so I just left that 198, but there is a hopeful, a hopeful that will stay under 200,000. But I'll have that final number. I should have that, I'll have that relatively soon. Article 17 is the public, the, the changes to the, the fine schedule for the public fighting bylaw. But it felt like we've just got so many, many months to go. And then Article 18 is the changes to the zoning bylaw regarding the pipeline review special permit. The two real property articles, the first is the authorization for the 20-year lease agreement with Lawrenceville, Central District. And the second is to, to authorize us to put 97 Main Street out for bid. That is it. So I apologize, the new one is the, is the stymied.
And, and so the moderator will resolve the other two meetings and then?
The no, but that's one.
Alright. Looks good. Thank you.
So, as far, as far as, we'll jump up to 2.1. You guys are here to help us out with the April 11th town meeting. And I wanted you guys here just to, so that we can figure out how we're going to do all of the technology stuff.
Move over here.
So. I guess, how do you want to, how, how do you think the, the format should stay how we did it last time, Veronica? Are you happy with how we had it set up?
I thought it was fine.
Okay.
I, I, I know that it was just the speakers at home at the very beginning, they couldn't hear. It wasn't working.
That was we figured out what that was.
That's a plug-in kind of thing.
The basic setup would remain the same, just the same way we do the town meetings, we did the key business forum and etc. Just the only question I had was the possibility, well, first off, this isn't a town meeting. It's something to do with.
The Board of Selectmen, yeah, to.
Meeting.
For the board there, they can.
To discuss the budget and stuff.
So we want to get, we'd have to set up the mics like we did with one public mic in the front. Or we could have the two roaming ones like we had.
One or two.
One or two, however, we want to be able to do that. I, the question would be, do we, we want to Zoom, and if we do Zoom, I wouldn't want any public comment for it, but just to have it there so we can, so people can view it remotely if they want to, is my thought. How are we, we can set it up like we had before?
You could do that, there's $85 a month, or there, and I was like, suggested this to Veronica a while back, and then when, we never wanted. You can buy the capability from Zoom to do the webinar version, which is how the school committee currently does their meetings. There's absolutely no direct input. Everybody can log in and see and hear. Nobody can talk into the meeting. It's a one-way street.
Well, can't we set the Zoom for no, no input, put everybody on mute when they come in and?
Yeah, we can, but if they unmute themselves, we'd be sitting there.
I thought, I thought you could keep the, you could mute everybody and keep it muted.
And when you open up, you can mute everybody when the meeting opens, but during the meeting, right now, anybody that's logged in cannot mute themselves from home.
And you can't set this to say that everybody's muted?
I can check, but I don't.
I don't think you can without putting your $85.
Yeah.
But the other question was, is, are they going to have any presentations or things that they want to show prior to the slides for their?
That was my other question.
I think we could be able to to present, I do think that.
Each articles like I did before.
Yeah, at least to put the articles up on the screen. I think we need to be able to.
We could throw the document on the screen and scroll.
Yeah, and scroll through. I mean, it would be nice, I mean, and if we do that, we can put the warrants up, and it's really nice to be able to see the budget and to be able to scroll back and forth when you're doing a presentation like that, or when there are questions.
Right.
So that everybody can see what you're talking.
From our end, that would require, not required, but it would be better if we did, like an internal Zoom link. So that way we can get the, well, like we did your laptop that you had up on the stage there. It was connected to the projector, you were logged into a Zoom account. Natalie was able to switch it over, so going out live, we could see a nice, crisp, clear version of what was going on.
And then Jim, the, the sound, we had a little problem with the sound, so we need to make sure that we don't.
We got that resolved.
You got that resolved too, okay.
What about the projector? Is there a projector in that room?
Yeah, yes, we have some.
Well, yeah, and now the projector that's in there is kind of.
We use the libraries, we use various other projectors.
Yeah, Dave Vigent usually offers to bring the water department projector, but it may be something you want to put on your wish list for a future purpose, purchase rather, to get a decent project. Do you remember the link I sent you for that? There's a projector system that's like this big. You just plunk it on the table in front of you, but it does HD quality projection with LED, and I mean, it's, yeah, it's an awesome piece.
How much was it?
Sorry?
How much was it roughly?
It was under a thousand.
Okay.
Everything seems to be that magic number, just under a thousand.
No, I, no, no, no. And then you guys have the sound system and all of that, so we wouldn't need to.
PA systems handled, it's the same setup we do for the town meetings.
And then we'll just do the tables like we always do?
I, I just want to weigh in on this meeting. I think it is too difficult to manage Zoom at the same time.
Yeah.
You're doing all this.
Right, what, what we're saying is we're doing an internal one so that we all.
Yes, that, I.
Yeah, the link wouldn't be shared with the public. They can watch it live on TV, or they can come down and throw some, they wouldn't be able to log into a Zoom.
They could see it later if we both.
It's just too confusing, so, okay, so we're doing an internal Zoom.
Right, so that we.
But I didn't hear the new gates of the external, so.
Not if we, we can't, if we can't mute, I don't think it.
Yeah, the muting is not easy.
Well, again, that ties back into if you want to spend the money to get it, so you can do a webinar. That's how we did the candidates night with the Townsend Business Association this past fall. Was I paid the, the money for it off of TCAM's account. And it worked beautifully. You set everything up just like a regular Zoom meeting, except the public can only look in here, they can't.
Yeah. I think it's part of our upgrades that, that Eric and I are working on. I think that might be something that we, having a projector would fall right into what we're, what we're planning, so that, and, and even putting it on a tripod out there, we need to have something to get it up a little higher.
Yeah.
If you have an extra one. But no, I think that's good. And then, and then we can go from there. Anything that you can think of that you would need on your end of it?
No, I mean, if we've got the documentation.
So this is more logistics. Are we just going to go through each article of the town meeting warrants? Are there any questions on, are there any questions on?
That's what I thought. And we'll have more realistic numbers by then. We think. I'm talking about the way that links out like that.
Yeah, I, I thought, oh, Sabrina was sitting there juggling her foot, and I'm like.
The magic cable.
Well. Again, when we get the new, the new.
I was going to say, the more incentive to get the new setup because everything we got works.
Yeah, I know. It's kind of rough for both.
Yeah.
Good, good. Well, alright, I think we're all set.
Well, I'm, one thing, I'm right now, is there any talk about a candidates night? Has anybody approached you? For teaching?
I haven't heard anything.
It's off the subject.
Yeah, I, I, I have heard nothing about it. When the candidates evolve, which is bad.
Yeah, Kim usually tries to step up and do something, but I know.
The year I went, they didn't.
Tim has been wrong with all kinds of work with the TBO and other things that she's involved in, so she may not have time to hand. There's not a lot of people on the ballot.
Well, I would like, for the school committee, there are like seven people, and you have to vote for three?
Yeah.
And I, I don't know many of them, and they're from other towns like Pepperell or Ashby. And it would be nice to have a Zoom candidates night for that purpose, as, as well as for the the, even Board of Selectmen, right? But those are the only two contested.
Yeah.
There's a lot of empty spots on the ballot for the positions that are open and nobody's running.
Right.
We have a lot on Planning Board, we have a lot on Housing Authority, I know we're at the top of the league, Recreation, water.
Everybody, just about every board is down at least one or two people, just barely able to function.
On the 11th, we'll see about. see about, um, maybe I should put on a sign.
I know, right there.
Yeah, there it is.
If anybody wants to organize a candidates night, or if they're host it, sponsor it, whatever.
We do that?
Give us a hall, or you can
Absolutely done. That would be something that they can get in contact with TCAM, and TCAM would be able to point them in the right direction, right?
If to the chair
Well, if we let them use the great hall, yeah, yeah, they can
Well, that's, I think in the past, the reason why people stayed away from the great halls is because of the impression that you can't hold a political event in a town building.
Well, they did it all the time. I mean, they, they always did it, the library after Board of Selecting, yeah, then all of a sudden it wasn't allowed. We couldn't post it on the website.
Yeah, so, I, I don't know what the rules and regs have for
I have never had to deal with that before.
I'm sure the, uh, the VFW would be willing to loan their facility out if such an event would happen, if it can't be held here. So.
Well, if it's a Zoom, it doesn't matter if it's not, it's all Zoom.
It's all Zoom.
Yeah.
We would need a moderator of some sort, somebody well spoken, somebody that's, um, voted select.
Anyway.
All righty then, we'll quickly move.
Yeah, if, anything else you can think of, uh, give TCAM a hall.
I will do that.
And I don't know if we've done it yet, I'll add on five minutes here, officially introducing Jim Springer. He's been working with me and TCAM for a couple of months, more than a couple of months now.
Mm-hmm.
And he's, uh, he's been instrumental, like what we did today with the Guardian tech that came out, getting stuff, uh, rerouted, straightened out, and keeping the integrity of the security that Guardian wants to provide you in town hall. So, um
Well, he slept equipment too.
Which I guess
He slept the equipment.
Yes.
Up and down the stairs if he needed.
It's so facile.
Yeah, thank you very much for your help.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you guys very much, I'll see you on the eleven.
Okay, good. Um, four point two, vote to finalize, so do we have to vote? No, let's go to the annual.
Well, do we wanna vote to finalize the special town meeting?
Um, we do.
Technically, technically speaking, you said the opening for the special time meeting from, till the seven.
Okay.
So, you could vote to finalize it as long as we don't have any other articles. If there's other articles that come in, we can talk about them on the eleven. But you can, you can vote to say, if these are the only articles, we're fine with it.
All right, so I move that we accept the special town meeting, um, as written, provided no other articles come in prior to the closing on April seventh.
I'll second that. Any further discussion?
Um, mm.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Well, the special is well set.
Thank you.
Annual town meeting. Um, so, if it's okay with you, I'm gonna do the annual not in numerical order, just to save the budget for last. Because it's a big
That's fine with me.
With the very large por- portion of it, but if we go through the rest of them, I think first, I think that would be helpful. Um, um, so Article one is, um, a standard article on appointments. Part of the two is a standard article on reports. There in every town meeting, Article three is the revolving, uh, the customary revolving fund article. Um, Article four is new, this was submitted by, um, uh, Chief Sartell. A request to establish three new relatively small, um, revolving accounts revolving funds for the police department.
He discussed this on, at the
He did.
Um, so did I mention that?
Um.
Yeah, request for revolving fund, I had fingerprinting firearms, right, so we have to read here.
Firearms, public record requests, and detailed cruiser fees.
Oh, to be, the public record, so, yeah, okay.
So, very relatively small dollars, reasonable request, um, but I, obviously, I'm for if they wanna
Well, I, I do have a question, now that I'm looking at this on the warrant. Um, for number, for the article prior, where the revolving funds are, there is a police revolving fund.
There is.
How is that, I mean, I know that these are specific, which is fine, but, um, and I assume it's for fees that come in for these purposes, I, I don't know, I mean
Right, firearms, with, with, with the key, the money.
So what is the, the other one?
The eighty thousand dollar, I, I, I would, I can check, find out.
And why, why separate, I mean, I'm good with it, but why separate from, from them?
Well, I do know it's, you know, it's a good practice to keep them separate if they're for, you know, specific purposes, um, but it, not knowing exactly what number nine on the regular revolving fund is for, um. Um, so then, Article five is the budget, so I'm just gonna skip down to Article six. That's okay. Article six is as the, as the, uh, with voted by the board, the, the Prop two and a half override article. Um, so I think I kept Article seven and Article eight just in the event of something unforeseen happening between now and the budget to allow for the possibility of either free cash or stabilization to, to balance the budget. The budget is balanced outside of the Prop two and a half right now.
Right, so I just wanna be a little clear, we have balanced the budget. The proposition two and a half override really is for the school budget, and it has nothing to do with the town budget. And the reason why we did it this way is to say that the town budget is balanced and with our, what we could afford for the appropriation for the school. But the two and a half, because I did hear some rumblings that the, the selectmen want an override, it is not the selectmen, it is the school. Schools that are looking for eight hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred thirty-six, and that is part of the override.
Right.
I just wanna be very clear about that.
Yeah, well, so, um, my, when we do get back to the budget, my suggestion for the budget is gonna be that we vote for it lined by, uh, major topic by major topic so that there is a specific vote on the school portion of the budget that would need the Prop two and a half override and balance. Right?
So.
So, so for purposes of Article seven and eight, right now, they are not necessary, we do not need stabilization, we do not need free cash funds to, to balance the budget, again, I would say the Prop two and a half.
Can I ask a question about this then? This is similar to what we did last year. Um, if the, um, if the override passes at the ballot
Mm-hmm.
then we vote Article six. Correct. And if it's a yes, then the school gets their one point two million plus. All right, that they're requesting. Um, if it's a yes at the ballot box, but the vote on town meeting for is a no what happens? Do we have to go back to the ballot box, or we're dead in the water?
Well, no, we would, we would have to have I, I believe we would, if we voted no on, on the, the Prop two and a half at the town meeting, um.
I have a little metrics here.
Yeah, that's it, no, I mean, that's a, that's a good question, the voters already authorized this to tax the levy for a certain amount, but we're, the town meeting's on the line with suspended.
Right.
Right.
So, we would probably end up, I mean, what we would end up having is another town meeting.
Okay.
If directed by that.
To, yeah, because the, the, the budget would not be balanced.
Okay, and it might also depend on what happens at other towns?
Yeah.
Okay, so now, if at the ballot box, it is a no.
Right.
Um.
Then Article six.
But the vote is a yes. Do we need to have another election?
Yeah.
It has
Okay, so that's another election.
Yeah.
All right, and if it's no, no, then?
Then we hope that we're not the only no of the three towns.
Okay.
Because we are, we're gonna have to find that money. But if we're not, then it goes back to the school department
Make their budget cut.
To cut, to cut their budget, they're not allowed to increase it, they can only reduce it.
So this could be another town meeting?
And, and
If it's no, no.
If it's no, no, it is, well, it is almost certainly going to be another town meeting, because we will have voted I'm assuming if they're voting no on that article, the rest are gonna be no on the, on the school department portion of the budget.
Correct.
Those two noes need to go hand in hand.
Right.
And that means we don't have a balanced budget, so we will have to have at least another town meeting, and maybe another town meeting and another election if the school department comes out with a budget that's still required the Prop two and a half override.
Okay, so now the next question is, if, if those are the scenarios with the ballot box and Article six, do we need Article seven and Article eight at all?
So, for the schools though it is, it is possible that Article eight, they could vote no at the ballot box vote no on Article six and say, instead of doing that, we wanna spend eight hundred and twelve thousand dollars out of stabilization.
No, yes on Article six. If they vote no on Article six, we're done, that's a no, no. Oh, no.
No, no, if they vote, no, if they vote, they know at the ballot box and know Article six, we're saying, we're not gonna use Prop two and a half to cover this budget.
Right.
Yeah, but it's possible, they, some, I mean, I don't think they will, but it's possible someone could say, why don't we just spend stabilization money to do it?
Okay.
But maybe we don't want to give them that option, maybe we wanna delete the stabilization. I actually am more concerned and it's only, again, a mild concern, that there's some radical change or some unexpected thing happens with something else in the ballot budget that we balance and we might need to say, oh, we need to take twenty thousand dollars in free cash to balance this budget.
Yeah.
Because we get the bids for insurance back, and they're way higher than we thought, or if something happens between now and the, and the end of the year we might wanna take free cash, and if it's really bad, and the free cash won't cover it we might need to take stabilization, but I think that's a very, very unlikely.
But here's the thing, if I'm, I could be remembering incorrectly, how much it's in stabilization?
A million?
Just over a million.
Yeah.
Like one point two million.
Yeah.
If we, stabilization, we have wiped out stabilization for the town.
Oh, I am not suggesting that we use stabilization, I do not If that's, if it's the, the will of the, of the, the board, I can certainly take the stabilization article off. I do think it's wise to leave the free cash article on.
Let's leave free cash in, that mean, if, if they do vote to transfer from free cash the amount needed to balance the budget, that means that a lot of stuff
Well, but remember, it might not be for the schools, it might be
To balance the budget.
Right.
Okay, then I can go with Article seven, but, but Article eight seems like, um, not a, not a good choice.
Yeah, I don't think it would be wise for us to use stabilization to cover the school gap.
It was one thing when we had, last year it was like two hundred fifty thousand that we needed.
Right.
Um, but this year, it's almost a mountain, I mean, eight hundred
Yeah, so I would, if somebody made a motion to use stabilization, I would be one hundred percent against it. So if the board doesn't, we won't leave that possibility, we can certainly delete that Article eight.
I move that we delete Article eight, um, to transfer funds from stabilization, um, from the board. And you're coming in.
I'd second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Okay, Article eight, no.
All right. We'll take that out.
I mean, we haven't even replaced the stabilization fund from, um, retro payment.
Yep.
Uh, and we, we really planned to do that, but we have not had the funds to do it.
Right.
So.
Okay, so, um, Article nine then is to fix the salaries of elected officers in town. That's a kind of a, a annual, um, article.
Right.
It's on there, um, Article ten is the water enterprise budget, so that's kind of in there every year. Um, Article eleven, I need to adjust the amount, this, this is going to be a, a different number. Because this is to raid the, the new borrowing that came through in the capital.
You've cut down the verb years to
Yeah, um, yeah, so that, I'm, I, I apologize, and I, you know, I, I I haven't, I didn't change that yet, but that's, it's for the new additional borrowing that the capital uh, planning committee authorized for the expanded PFAL project, the water treatment.
I think this is the last year's article.
Yeah, so I apologize for that, that, I will, I will correct that. Um, uh, then Article twelve um, this is the capital plan. Um, Article, uh, thirteen is the, um, the lease for the ambulance
Um.
Coming from the, the, uh, ambulance.
This is for the ambulance that is
The existing ambulance, being leased.
The one that's number one in the, uh, Article twelve? Or?
No, this is an ongoing lease, this is the
Okay.
I believe, I, I believe, and I'll double check this, I believe this is the last year, last year payment
Two years ago, yeah.
For, for this, for the, I think this is the ambulance.
Right.
Um, so, but that money's transferred from the ambulance to the
But what are we talking about, Article twelve still?
Oh, I munched, Art, it's Article thirteen
I was on Article thirteen.
But I munched it with Article twelve, number one. I wanted to know which ambulance it was.
Right, so this lease is for, not for Article twelve, number one, it's a separate ambulance that we, I think we, I think we started the lease two years ago.
Well, and on Article twelve, I'm not, I'm not happy with the, um, forty thousand dollars for a pickup truck for facilities right now, before we find out exactly what the what the repairs, what do we need to do with the town, like I've asked for two years, so I'm not
But that five-year plan is something that Rob and I are working on right now.
Okay.
He submitted the documentation to me.
Mm-hmm.
So I haven't had a chance, unfortunately, to, to go through it and, and
Right, but I would like to have each building reviewed by a professional to find out what we have for repairs and not just, you know, we need to look at all of our buildings, that's what I meant to be for the opera plans for for, for the report. Um, I would rather see that first before we go for a truck. No, these are just recommendations from capital.
Right, okay.
Um, when, when do we have to vote on this warrant? When is it made to be posted, the eighteen? So, we can, um, discuss that further next week.
True.
So, if, if they know about little meeting before we have the you know, the town meeting, maybe we could do that one. So that when we go to the meeting of the town on the eleven, what we have are the actual warrants.
Right. That makes sense. Um, um, Article fourteen is the PEG access receipts, again, this one um is the same as last year, it didn't have an amount last year, but I will check to see and put an amount in there.
I thought it was last year.
Oh, I think we knew what the amount was, but I, 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 this is, this is Oh, I think we knew what the amount was, but I, 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 this is, this is, I just copied the same article from last year.
That's how we knew that it wasn't, um, four quarters worth. Because we are supposed to transfer four quarters at the annual town meeting. And last year, we only transferred three.
That's why we had.
Um, because although the money had come into the town, we knew what that fourth quarter was, it had not yet been posted.
I don't know how, okay.
And, and so we weren't able to do it, because tech, the accountant said, don't do it. The year before, we did transfer.
Awful.
So we didn't have the need for the other, the article that's on this special town meeting, to transfer just that one quarter.
Right.
Um, so I would prefer to do it the way it's, um.
So, do you mind if I talk to the accountant around it and see if we can do it?
Yeah, whatever needs to be done, but.
Yeah, because that, yeah.
That, that was pulled back towards the end, but I know we had a dollar amount there, and that we fit it in somehow.
I remember always talking to dollar amount, yeah.
Alright, um, Article Fifteen is the five thousand dollars for the three hundred anniversary celebration. Article Sixteen is eight thousand dollars for the periodic inspections of the Board of Ins testers. Article Seventeen is, I think, just a. Generally allowed, I mean, it's in every town meeting, I think, authorizing the board's assignment to do.
For the, no, no.
That's aggregation.
Yes.
Oh, I apologize, no, no, I was thinking, um. Now, this, yeah, this is the, the, the authorized the, the board to take part in aggregation, correct?
And so we'll have, um, pamphlets for, I saw that, um. Ross had turned in the pamphlets for Townsend and the FAQs and one other form that we can print. I wanted to talk about that later.
Yeah, we got, we got words, that's on. Uh, this is just to, to, to see if the town will vote again, vote to grant the board a selectmen authority to. Move forward with the aggregation, right?
Uh, Article Eighteen, this is the, the two changes that are being made to the town meeting section of the. Bylaws, the first is about quorum, and the second is moving the date for submission of Article Warner from. Uh, March first to April first. As you can see, that, uh, added to one twenty-four dot seven, drops the quorum from seventy-five to fifty. Article Nineteen is the CPA. Um, so. The, when this is, when this motion is read, the motion that is read will include the proposed percentage and the proposed. Yeah, exemption. They'll have that draft, I have the, I have the language ready. Um, Article Twenty is, um, the Affordable Housing Trust bylaw that was drafted.
Is this on the majority vote, or is this the two thirds?
It's just a general bylaw though.
So that's just to make it so that people can find the trust in each of, as opposed to going for the rest.
Um, and then Article Twenty-one, the final article, is. The Harbor Trace and Kew Bridge.
Oh, there, there isn't, can I just back up to section five of the Affordable Housing Trust? The clause that should be changed to posted, I don't know if I can add that right here. You see it?
I see it, yeah.
It should just say posted, that's what I thought. And he incorporated the, um. The amendments that we made.
Into those are.
Okay. Alright, now we can go down the, the.
But again, Article Twenty is just the, the, um. The town acceptance of, of Harbor Trace and Kew Bridge. I got the language from Adam. To do it. And that's the end.
Alright, so the rest of my things are in the budget.
Oh, we still have to look for them.
Well, I was just mentioning, we do have Ross here to talk about, um.
Yeah, for Earth Day. Oh, Earth Day, you want to jump to Earth Day now? And then go back to the budget?
I'm just wondering if that may make sense.
Follow through everything in the meeting business and through the budget, um, that's okay.
I'm okay with that.
Um, just because I might talk more than what other people might want to listen to, so.
Why don't we just jump right down then to the, um, to the Earth Day? Um, so we're gonna jump down to four point five. And discuss the Earth Day tables and the aggregation and CPA. So, hi Ross.
Good evening, everybody. How are you tonight?
I'm good.
How are you?
I'm good, thank you. So I sent, um, earlier today, I think, copies of some literature that we, I would propose that we put on the. Table at Earth Day on Saturday, the twenty-second. A lot of the stuff is now live on the town's webpage, you'll notice a nice electric bolt icon on the, on the main page. And that, I asked them to do that, um, so that it will sort of stay there for the duration. If we did it as a news update. It would eventually drop off as other updates are added, so that little icon will stay there, and that takes you to the Townsend C E A. Website, and it's now live with information. So I'm suggesting we use some of this information for the, uh, table on the twenty-second.
So we have the, um, we have the, is there, is this like a booklet? From Good Energy, and then we're gonna have, uh, like a tri-fold, um.
Yeah, there's a, um, brochure, it's two pages, there's also a longer one that's four pages. Um, I would put in the presentation that I showed you back, I think in February, maybe we can put that on. Double-sided and two slides per page or something to cut down an amount of paper.
Okay.
And then the FAQs, I mean, the FAQs I think are pretty comprehensive and probably would address everybody's. Concerns if they take the time to read it. In parallel with Earth Day, I'm planning on a interview slash presentation with TCAM. And Mike Brown from the Energy Committee has volunteered to sort of host or emcee that. And also give us another chance for John O'Rourke and I to explain how the program works. And sort of preemptively answer some questions. So, these are the things I like to get done before town meeting, and the, the Earth Day is one, and then the TCAM presentation is the second.
Uh, so Ross, are you providing the brochures, or do we need to provide them?
I'm trying to get, um, Good Energy to print them and send them to Eric.
Oh, good, okay.
If, if that doesn't work, then I'll get ahold of Eric and Sabrina and ask if we can, if they can do that, but.
Alright, and are you planning to be there on Earth Day, Ross, or are we covering it?
I'm planning to be there, you're welcome to join me.
Oh, I plan to be there, yeah.
No, I'm planning to be there from ten to two or ten to three, whatever it is.
Yeah, it's ten to three, usually, um, okay. Alright.
So they have, according to, um, the information that I see here, it's, it's a ten-foot. Space that, that we have, so I'm thinking just a six-foot and a four-foot table will be one long table.
Do we need to bring our own canopy?
Yeah, we have to bring our own pop-ups.
So, um, do we have that? We have a pop-up, and I can't remember the size.
Um, I should volunteer this, but I have a canopy, if, if you end up needing one, just let me know, I can bring one.
Alright, so let me check on the size of the one that we have, I, it might be ten by ten.
Yeah, the spot, the spot is ten by ten, it's gonna be up by one nineteen.
Yeah.
And, um, we can get, uh, we have a six-foot and a four-foot table we can use from, um, in Memorial Hall. And then there's a tablecloth right there that we can use.
Right, right there.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it has the town seal on it.
Alright, um, so we'll have CPA literature, we need to talk about what we're gonna provide for that. Um, but we need to put something out on that, we'll have energy aggregation, and I don't know that it will be done, but if the five. Year plan for the housing trust, maybe we'll talk later. Because I, we won't have time, we would be that far to our next meeting, the twenty-seventh of April.
Um, so we'll be the CPA and maybe from.
Yeah, the Community Preservation Goals, there's a lot of, um. Um, informational things.
Yeah, there's a lot there.
Can we get, can we get, see if they can provide us some brochures?
I'll ask if they can provide us some brochures that they might call the bar.
Okay, that would be great.
Actually, had to order some stuff on. Like, for, for my company, and I think I saw one of it, that you can order for free.
Okay.
You know what I mean, it's a site that you can get any free literature, and I think they were on there.
Okay.
Alright. Alright, then. I think we're good.
I think we're good.
We need to bring our own chairs.
Anything else, Ross, that you can think of?
I, I think we've got it covered, we, we'll bring the literature, if I can't, I'll let Eric know, but, um. We're gonna bring the, the literature, I'll bring a canopy in case you need it, so.
Okay. I'll let you know, Ross, if we have one, maybe you should throw yours in the adjusting page, there, you know. Uh, okay, I'll let you know what we have too.
Alright. It's like old times, listening to some of those town meeting issues.
Things don't change much. Thank you very much for your time, Ross.
Alright, have a good night, and we'll see you on the twenty-second.
Alrighty.
Okay, so let's jump, jump back to four point three, yeah.
Well, can we just, are we all gonna be there for Earth Day?
I'll be there.
You'll be there, I'll be there, Sabrina's coming.
She's bringing her children, I think.
Yeah, oh yeah, I must have used the oven, so, definitely, alright.
I just was gonna stop in last year, and I ended up spending two hours there.
Alright.
Um, four point three, uh, vote to move location of the access easement on one seventy-seven Main Street. So I included a plan in the chairpoint, which, um, have a larger version of it, if it, if it makes it easier to see. I think I've accepted offline with folks, so this is, um. Uh, I talked to the Worktown Council, um, and made the determination that we're gonna go forward with the board's alignment vote. To merely move an easement, which we have, we asked the town to have the authority to do, as long as it doesn't. Um, cause any, um, negative consequences to the easement holder. If the easement holder maintains request, that we move it, it shouldn't cause any negative consequences. No, the, the vote would be to, to move the easement and authorize the. Town administrator to sign any documents to effect that move.
Alright, I make a motion to move the location of the access easement on one seventy-seven Main Street. Um, as per the plan, and I authorize, and we, and authorize the town administrator. To sign any, um, necessary documents.
Second. Any further discussion?
Not for me.
Not for me. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four point four, vote to approve a bond sale in the amount of two million, three hundred forty-five thousand dollars, Eric. Yeah, so this is the, um, uh, the bond sale this month that we've been contemplating. Uh, it's taking some of our short-term debt and, um. Uh, putting out our own longer-term bonds, includes, um. Uh, the large dump truck that was purchased for the highway department, the fire truck that was purchased for, it's on order. Of course, you won't get it for a whole year, but it's on order for the fire department, it includes the, um. Um, uh, some of the, uh, initial engineering debt that was taken on for the water treatment plant. It includes, uh, two hundred thousand dollars of initial, uh, borrowing that was done for, uh, the Green Ridge Bridge engineering. Along with some other smaller things, but those are the main, the main large items that are included in the list, was debt offering. Um, we had, um, a, a ratings meeting. With Moody's, which turned out very well, we came back, we're still at double A three, which is. A good rating for a town of our size, so they maintain their good rating, um, for this debt offering, so that was a positive. But this is, is a board of the board's like, the board, voted the board's like, to authorize the treasurer to, to go out to bond.
Alright, I move that we, um, approve a bond sale in the amount of two million, three hundred forty-five. Thousand dollars.
The second down. Any further discussion? Yeah, I'm good on this too. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four point six, um, discuss RFPs for town buildings.
Um, if you could go over them.
Yeah, so the.
I know what.
I will be completely honest, the, the, the bulk of these RFPs are identical, the only, um. The only differences are the, kind of the, the summaries of purpose at the beginning of them, I just. The, all of the technical requirements and the documents you have to fill out are identical from one to the other.
Right.
Um, so this is for the three historic buildings that we've discussed in the path, the lib, Hart Library, the old Harbor Ferry Station, and the old Central Fire Station. Um, um, and, um, so I'll, I'll, the, the, I'll go over the Hart Free Library. Um, requesting proposals for the rehabilitation of the property at two seventy-six Main Street, uh, the Hart Free Library. Uh, um, uh, seating proposals for rehabilitation of the structure and property. Into three commercial slash office slash gallery spaces, through the first floor and the basement. The structure should have a common updated bathrooms, the plans are eighty-eight and line entries, software spaces, a sector solution should be a part of the proposal. Um, we want to maintain, uh, and rehab the historic exterior of the structure. And modernize the interior of the structure with shelf space suitable for conversion to an office, commercial, gallery space by the. So I think that encapsulated the kind of things that we heard from the public, that they'd like to see in that space.
So.
Exactly what was talked about. With that, that's the Hart Free Library, um.
Do we need a motion for each of these?
Um, yes.
So can we do it one at a time? Um, so I, I move we, um, go forward with the RFP for the, um. Rehab of the Hart Free Library.
The second down. Need further discussion?
Just looking more quickly, you'll, you'll fill in the, the bits on the day.
Yeah, once we, once I get the, the exact date, I'll fill out. Yeah, once we, once I get the, the exact date, I'll fill out the information.
Then no, no further discussion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Uh, Barack and Fallon, yes.
Yes.
Sorry, sorry.
That's okay.
Um, so the second proposal was for the old Harbor Fire Station. Um.
Well, the old harbor, yeah, or the old central.
Harbor, the old harbor.
Harbor.
And so we would be seeking proposals for the rehabilitation of the structure on the property into a space suitable for a fire museum. Like, that's the one that we thought was appropriate for for that, because of its proximity to the historic society, the way it's constructed. Um. Um. The structure should have an updated bathroom and systems, and a plan for an ADA compliant entrance, because I'm not sure that there's any existing entrance. It's fully ADA compliant, so that would be a part of the plan. Um. Uh, more specifically, the purpose of this RFP is to identify and select proposals that maintains and rehabs the historic exterior of the structure and modernizes the interior of the structure with sales-based stool for museum-based bike.
Um. Um, right now, don't we have a, um, a lease with DCR? Do we know when that is on?
Oh. We, we, we don't. I know that the, the fire chief knows when, they're in violation of their lease at the moment, but we have the authority to terminate the.
That's the only, I, the summary and purpose is, is okay with me, I didn't. I'm curious.
Okay, I'll find that out with fire chief and get specific dates. I think what he has indicated to me is that they have been waiting for us to terminate the lease because they're not keeping the building as required.
Mm-hmm.
And so, I think, you know, their vehicle is still there, but I think they understand that at any time, we can just terminate the lease for their.
I, I would just want to maintain good relations with DCR.
Okay, well, I, I, I will, um, I, I, I'll talk to the chief and we'll have a conversation with DCR about maybe, maybe there's another space that we do provide them for their vehicle.
I've had conversations and we can probably accommodate that request as well, so.
Yeah, I think that was my understanding, you know, I don't wanna make any problems.
Yeah, I don't either, but I know that there has been conversation and there's, there's probably a.
Yeah, I think there's a solution, we can get them out of that space and, but not be left, uh, uh, will be.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so I, I make a motion that we, my staff, um, summary of purpose from the RFP, let's just say, for the um, old Harbor Fire Station. Um, contingent on the lease being resolved with DCR.
No second down? Any further discretion?
Hmm.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And the old Central Fire Station.
Yeah, so the old Central Fire Station, but again, I'm only reading the parts that are different, so I follow that, it sounds like it's very brief. Um, so the town is seeking proposals for the rehabilitation of the structure on the property into a space suitable for a commercial, office, small restaurant, or gallery space. The structure should have updated bathrooms and systems, a plan for an ADA compliant entrance. Again, I don't, I don't believe this entrance is for ADA compliant. Um. Uh, more specifically, the purpose of this RFP is to identify and select the proposal that maintains, rehabs the historic exterior of the structure and modernizes the interior of the structure with sales-based suitable commercial office, small restaurant, or gallery space by the end of the year.
Um, okay, I'm good with the purpose. I have a question on this one. Um. Do we need, or, and this could be for Hart Library too, and maybe for the, one of the Harvard, you have to be concerned about parking spaces? Or does that become part of the term? Like, do we need to address it?
I, I, I do not think we need to address it in the proposal, because the proposal is just to rehab the building. There will be a, a future discussion with a possible tenant where I think parking would come up.
Well, do we need to? Who provides the parking space? Like, at the Hart Library, there's the, you know, the parking area.
The gravel area, yes.
Should that be part of what we do in the rehab? Should we be um, you, you know, because it's no good to a tenant if it doesn't have parking spaces?
Right.
Uh, I just bought it, and I'm thinking about, okay, so a restaurant, that, ooh, where are they gonna park? Um.
Well, they're, we're requesting for proposals, they, but then propose what they, I mean, I would think that that would be, have to be part of it, if that's what.
I mean, yeah, well. Not necessarily, I mean, i- i- if you'd like, I could go and add with suitable parking to each one of the proposals.
I can see that, if it comes for the planning board, you know, it's, we grant, okay, you, you're the person we've chosen, you know, in a response, and they go to get permits, because you're gonna need permits to do that, correct?
Uh-uh, you don't, you need building permits. You're, th- this is not, this is not setting up any particular use. This is building on a shell. So the, the tenant, when we decide to inhabit that space as a tenant, is gonna be the one that's gonna need to go to, if they're, to, to check to see that their use is allowed by the zoning board, and if there's any release they need to be required. That wouldn't be a part of this RFP. That would be a part of the time when we house someone in the building.
Our, I don't believe our buying law will allow, like, for Hart Free Library, you could park it just suite. But if there are three, you know, uses, and it's a gallery or whatever, uh, and there's no parking, other than one space for, I think there's three, we need to squeeze in maybe four people over there, you know, who got their, we, um, how? Uh, it's something to consider.
I, I agree with you, it's something to consider, and the question is, if we, we can, like I said, I can go and include you in the RFPs to update the parking at each location.
I think we should.
We can do that, that, you know, I, but again, I don't think that's what we're, what we're saying to the.
That's that space, and then they're told, you have to provide a parking space in there, and oh, by the way, it's a joint parking space, so you have to get together with all the other tenants. And who's gonna pay for it? Well, is this one person just going to provide that one spot, I mean? And the, over here, I don't even know how much parking there is for Central Fire Station. Um, same down.
I, I think we own the lot next to it, that vacant lot.
Do we? Um.
I believe we do.
So there you go, complete street, the, the one community, one stop, I mean, we need to talk about this, can talk about.
But if I, i- if we put it as part of the proposal, a proposal for appropriate parking space, then, then we can put that on that, you know, they can say, we're gonna on top here, we're gonna, you know, delineate with gravel and, and, you know.
I mean, you could wind up with three different kind of things, depending, if I were an artist and I were going to a building to rent a space, I would expect there to be parking there always. If I had to provide parking, I would go somewhere.
Yeah, and that's why I said, we put it in the RFP, then
Okay.
it would, it would be a part of the RFP.
Clearing up proposal for updating the parking.
Updating the parking.
That's available, okay. And then the, the there's another option, but, but I didn't realize we own the empty lot.
I believe that we do. I'll double check that before I finalize the old Central Fire Station.
So I guess I would move to um, to uh, um, accept the RFP uh, proposing um, for the Central Fire, whole Central Fire Station. Um. With a clause on parking available, just say, they don't have to do the parking lot next door, but it's part of it. You know, updating the parking, that's available. And um, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
And can we amend the other two?
I will take it in there, I, I think we, I can.
Okay.
At that same length.
Thank you, Eric.
Yes.
We'll get those out as soon as possible and see what we hear back.
Uh, four point seven, discuss Melanson contract for fiscal year twenty-four.
Mm-hmm.
Um. So, it's, it's, I said Melanson, it's, they're, they've changed their name, they got bought, they're Markham now, so um, uh, this is a, a um, a proposal that I asked them to come up with, assuming the town moved forward and had a um, assistant town accountant on that. So this is their proposal for an assistant, if there's a, if they find a assistant town accountant working in there. So they've changed their scope of this one? The, yeah.
Yeah.
Markham. Melanson changed their name to Markham, I.
Okay.
They got bought out, but I apologize, I, and I, when I, when I printed it out and I realized that what I put into the agenda was based on their old name, not their new name.
Okay.
Um. So, um, based on the, um, this, this uh, uh, proposal tracks with where I hoped they were gonna come in, in, in pricing. Um. So it's a forty-five thousand dollars, so it's about half of what their FY twenty-three, exactly half of what their FY twenty-three contract.
Does that include the extra twenty-five twenty?
It did. Well, remember, that extra, that extra was some from the year before, which we are paying for right now. Um. Uh, so.
Where do you see that in here? The dollar figure? But I'm looking at that.
Well, I probably don't have the documents.
Number H five, face the service and the re-advising.
So, they're going to be structuring their um, uh, their payment based on the assumptions of when they're gonna be kind of doing more work for the town, so. In June, I mean, sorry, in July and August, um, we'll be paying um, seven thousand dollars each of those months because we're gonna have a relatively new um, uh, assistant town accountant, and that's gonna be the start of the fiscal year, they're gonna be opening up all the books looking down the last fiscal year. Um. Uh, from September through May, um, it's like twenty-six, sixty-seven, or something like that, per month. Um. With the assumption that, you know, the, the, that money is mostly going to be in oversight and tr- and training. Um, and the, the town accountant will have had five full, the assistant town accountant will have had five full months of training before that lower price point steps in. And so, during the regular kind of year where it's just kind of maintenance and, and you're not opening or closing for the year, it's assumed that, that markets agree you do a lower amount of work, over, still overseeing, but obviously still be available. And then in, in June, the price goes back up to seven thousand dollars. Um, with the assumption that for, for uh, the closing of the books, um, this is the town accountant that's gonna rely on, and that, that, right now, we pay seventy-five hundred dollars a month. So, the assumption would be, in the first couple of months and the last month of the year, that market's gonna really be available to, to do the full accountant's job during those years.
Okay.
I mean, there's one that I felt this.
Do we, uh, are there fees based on product, or is it based on hours? Because I'm reading the second paragraph, that says, Markham, should the town require additional service hours beyond the estimated amount? So that's a dollar amount. Is that dollar being charged for a work product? Or is it being charged and for an hour?
It's a, it's an hour, it's an assumption of hours.
Um. Markham will make reasonable efforts to obtain prior approvals from the town related to amounts above the estimate. There will be invoice efforts, separate invoice from standard invoices after the applicable month.
Right.
So.
If for some reason there's a crisis, an unanticipated crisis that we need to have, market's been more than the estimated time on. They're gonna bill us above and beyond the regular hours.
I am. That's what I'm, that's what I'm. Um, I, I guess. So. Do we know the things that need to be done in that month? And do we know that we are gonna get someone from them who can do it within the time allotment that seven thousand dollars allows?
Right.
Um, that's my concern, I guess I should say. Uh. In other words, I don't wanna wind up where we're gonna get another, the town is gonna get another huge bill that we don't anticipate. Um.
Well, they're gonna make reasonable effort to, to notify us.
I think the key, the key in this situation for me is that, you know, they're, they're uh, large charges that they did at the end of FY twenty-two were in relation to things that weren't done during FY twenty-two that needed to be fixed at the end of the year.
So are we at the point where that's the war two, monthly reconciliations have passed?
Yeah.
Are we at the point where the, that is being done?
ongoing.
Monthly?
Monthly, yeah.
Okay. That's.
It's current.
It's current. And so, the.
History, right?
Yeah, un- unlike, so we're, we're talking about Melanson will have been here for the close of FY twenty-two and the cleaning up of FY twenty-two, the full period of FY twenty-three, including the opening and then the closing of FY twenty-three, which they're on the hook for, for under their current contract that we have. And then the opening of FY twenty-four through the closing is what's covered by this contract? So that, we should not be anticipating, you know, i- if they said, I, this is a problem because if something happened in FY twenty-three, my response would be, well, let's talk to the person who's the accountant in FY twenty-three, that's you guys. That's not a responsibility that we need to be paying more money for.
Okay, so, here is my concern. Um, we have Roselli on board as our auditor, and FY twenty-two, which we spoke about, has not yet been admitted. Um, so, is that, I mean, and I don't even know how to trigger that. I'm no longer on the audit committee and haven't been for a while. Um. Because we, but it's and a, and a second for the audit committee.
Right.
So, I don't know that it's the selectmen's job to contact Roselli. I don't know whose job it is.
So I can generally, I will touch base with um, with uh, both Elizabeth and Laurie.
Because I had a feeling that this would be started already, and we're in April, and our audit for the last fiscal year has not even started. And that can be time.
Right.
Um, and hopefully, everything is in order, in order, it should be. Um, and it would just be a matter of, here you go, here you go, here you go. Um, it won't be more for the audit because we you know, done that, and if they have actually had everything in order, it should be seamless.
It should.
Um, so, and that's something I want to, want to.
Anything else in regards to the contract?
No, I, I, except I, I, I do wanna give credit to, to both Laurie and Elizabeth for their um, not just willingness, but it seems to be very excited about the, about the plan that the town is taking on to, to, to try and, and um, and start train up a, a town accountant. And then, you know, they've al- they've already, kind of made very clear that they're, they're working on um, uh, plans to, as to how to bring the training along for the last three months of this year, and then, and then how to, uh, kind of transition over the, the work while still, you know, being around, by, by, they, they, they both, they're very, you know, really, really helpful and you know, very willing to take on the training piece.
So do we need to, um, do we have a vote to have used night it, or?
Yes.
Okay, but before we do, can I ask one other question, there's an asterisk on. Okay, but before we do, can I ask one other question, there's an asterisk on Schedule A. What does that refer to? Uh, these are all things that are so-called year-end Schedule A reports, asterisk, so-called. DOR pre-cash certification, so-called asterisk. Uh, sound tax recap, asterisk. Let's see.
I thought it was just reflected, those are things that, documents and, and how we, how we refer to the document.
Okay, so that's what the asterisk stands, but there's no.
But, yeah, there's no corresponding, something for a note or something?
Yeah, I was.
I know. I was too, I believe that.
Um, so, hmm. All right. So, um, I make a motion that we authorize the town administrators to sign the contract with Melan- with.
Markham.
Markham. Um, for FY twenty-four.
Second down? Any further discussion? Any others in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Uh, four point eight, vote to set the election.
Great, um, I move that we set the date of the election for, to Monday, April twenty-fourth.
I second that. Any discussion on that? I don't think so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And so it is done.
And there's a document, I believe, that I have that needs to get signed.
Anybody's chair? On his. Uh, four point nine, review and approve, um, this is the, uh, Assistant Library Director and Technology Coordinator um, that the director had discussed in our budget summit, and then they added the, um, the additional duties. Uh, this actually is so ten the hours of the library, which I think is a good thing, um, the opening hours of it.
Also reflects the additional duties plus the real ability to have another person who is technically in charge when library director is not available.
Yeah.
Because she wants to take vacations with her, her dog, yeah. And we want people to take everything, we do.
We do, yeah. Um, does there be, uh, like a, um, a wait time? And it's not, not exist?
They're not, so.
They're not a union, um.
They're not, it's, it's not a.
They're not unions, but they are part of the cost and class plan of the town. So I, I guess I would want to see a, um, you know, that.
Uh, so the amount is in the budget. Um, and i- if you'd like, so the amount is in the budget, and I can, um, have that information put onto the, onto the, uh, the job description.
Yeah, just, um, so just add.
Okay, well, I'll.
I agree because we, one of the biggest things, we wanted everything to be the thing, we didn't want it different.
So I'll have, I'll have the library director add that.
The only people that don't have that are those who have a personal service contract. Everybody else is on the.
So if you're.
Or do we need to move?
Yeah.
All right, I ma- I make a motion that we accept the job description for the Assistant Library Director and Technology, uh, Coordinator, uh, with the addition of the common time plan for the town noted.
Second down? Any other discussion? Not for me, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, I was going back to the budget. We are gonna go back to the budget. Work session. Yeah, the work session. Let's go back to the budget. Um, so we are gonna be going back to. Where is it?
Uh, that's part of, uh, it, it's part of the Alt ATM warrant.
Okay.
That's four point two.
Four point two, so let's finish out four point two. It says right on top, thank you Sabrina, four point two. And you, um, did, Veronica, you said you wanted to do each section by section?
Well, I have things that I wanted to talk about, but, um, we can go however we want. Um, I'm, I'm looking at the functional, um, settlement. I think that when we meet on next week Tuesday, we should be prepared to, um, discuss the forty-three point nine percent uh, increase in highways and streets, which I think is pretty explainable, though.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, that, that's.
We should be able to discuss that.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we were gonna prepare for that anyway.
Yeah, I mean, that's, there's a, there's a very large reason for that, so.
And, and if you look at this, you have to ask, okay, smallest percent change, education, two point seven. Why are we asking for an override of eight hundred plus thousand? So I think that needs to be, um.
Yeah, I mean, I think, because it's the largest portion of our budget, and that their, their number makes up sixty percent.
Oh, and I think we also have to say that we budgeted for this amount.
This is what the budgeted amount is, which doesn't include the eight hundred.
Which doesn't include.
Yeah, so I, and I apologize for that, that needs to be, in the warrant, needs to be the full amount, not the three hundred thou. No, I'm not, I think so, it absolutely needs to be, because that's the budget, it's been ever, I have to have the numbers from the budget that was sent over by the by the school, so I apologize, this included, this is my balance budget, not my, uh, override budget.
And the increase in debt service has to do with the, um, things that we talked about, the fire truck that we're purchasing, the, all the capital items that we are borrowing for.
It, this is an increase, but there was a corresponding decrease last year, so we just had one year where we had a dip in the, in the debt service, and this is bringing back our debt service in line to what it's been in prior years.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and just to, I, I know that the board has already heard this, but just in case you haven't, um, there is a plan to, so the, the largest items that we have on our debt service outside of the water treatment plant are, you know, new fire equipment, fire and ambulance equipment, and there is a plan to use ambulance receipts to fund that debt. And, um, based on the way that the ambulance system are running, and the fact that we will, the hundred thousand dollars that we're currently spending under the ambulance league is going to not need to be spent on that anymore, we should be able to fully fund the, the pieces of equipment that are in the current capital plan already voted on, and then the new capital plan from the ambulance receipt, and not from the general.
You're talking about the public safety vehicle, on wildfire.
The fire, the fire vehicles, yes.
All right, so now that we wanna do this, do anything? Cause I, I have a couple things that I want to say.
Go ahead, Board of Selectmen.
All right, so, um, line on the grant administrator. So, I would like to see this put back in. And my reason for that is, if you, if you couple, i- if you say, oh, well, we had put the grant work in the Land Use Coordinator position, but now it's been removed.
Now, we, yeah.
Because of hours.
Right.
Um.
Yeah, we had added some hours, trying to increase the salary.
Right.
With some increased duties. Um, the, the solution that we're gonna end up with our Land Use Coordinator is a great one for the town, but it doesn't allow for us to have those additional hours, after rolling back the earlier hours. So those grant duties don't exist anywhere currently in the budget.
So we do need to put them back.
So I, my, my, I mean, we really do need to look at grants in order to get things done in town.
That's one hundred percent.
And so maybe we need to, um, put that back in, and, and look at the Grant Administrator Job Description, which we're doing on this one, and make it a little more targeted after the amount of time that we did have a grant administrator, and I think we have a better idea of what a grant administrator needs to be, and what the job description needs to be, so maybe we ban that.
Yeah, I think.
But put this back in, and in F one, whatever in F one is, this is probably higher than in F two.
I think that's an F two, yeah.
Two.
Um, so I can certainly do that, and, uh, i- if you'd like, a- any tweaks at this point are, are probably coming from that amount that was set aside for paving, absent some other item that we, that we reduce in.
Well, what about, um, Land Use Coordinator?
Well, yeah, we, if we're taking it out of that.
Um, but that, the lower amount is already in the budget, it's definitely a new coordinator, sorry.
Uh, but I thought, what happened to the funds that we, I thought it was higher, in what we looked at on the eleven? Yeah, it was an increase of five thousand nine hundred forty-five. But now I know it's lower in what we're looking at here.
Right.
Um, but, but what happened to that, that sucked in somewhere else?
That was, I mean, uh, yes, it got, it got sucked into some other changes, remember we were, there was a lot of, um, manipulation trying to get health insurance for them, a couple of hold on to them.
Yeah.
And so, uh, you know, that reduction in hours came when we realized we were gonna try to move someone to, uh, onto the health insurer.
But I thought, okay, so if we're looking at land use, we're putting those two positions together, that would be taken by, that would be sub-contained. It's a highway department, there's a new position there.
Yes.
Okay, I, we don't have to argue this in detail right now, um.
Yeah, so, I apologize, when I, when I was going through and balancing things, I wasn't just, yeah, I was, I was looking at the whole budget and moving pieces a- as I, as I went around, so it wasn't just a, a one line up, one line down sort of situation.
Well, let's look at this and figure out how we can find. Um, because I, I could think it's needed, um.
Okay, yeah, no, I.
If there's anybody that's gonna be doing what Emily and I just did for the community and what.
Right, you're probably talking about fifteen, fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Um.
Uh, get right in there, around there. So, um, so that's, do we need a motion for this? Or, how do you wanna do that?
I mean, i- if, if, if all of the members of the Board of Selectmen who are here are of the same mind, I think you can just instruct me, I don't know what I used to do, I mean, or you can take a motion, but, but, yeah. This is your.
What would you like to do?
I would like to have all of them, everybody talking about it, that it's true.
Okay. All right.
So we should, and should instruct that we have a mutual discussion, and I'd like to get Teresa's input as well for that work there.
So I will, I will, um, I will look at contingencies to come up with that fifteen thousand dollars, we're about them.
Okay.
Anything else under Board of Selectmen?
Under Board of Selectmen, no, I think that's the, the, um, Mark Park and Ride call. I'm hoping we know that for real by, um, yeah.
Yeah, that's our gas in the range.
Yes.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's so.
Right, um, nothing else there?
Okay, accounting?
Nope, sort of a standard note.
Every disaster, there's your reflector. Um, legal?
We, do we have a, um, do we have a, a contract for next year with them? Yes?
Oh.
Adam provided one?
I can touch trace of that.
Uh, because I think we're.
We do this year.
What?
We're doing it.
We do. Is it, is it off, or, or?
Well, I think we have a year, we, there's a, um.
Okay.
I just found out, again.
We did something last year, didn't we? Cause we reduced it.
Um, well.
We reduced.
We reduced it, but, um, I think it's around fifty-five K for the flat fee, monthly fee. Uh, I'm, don't quote me on numbers, but.
Right, they're, a portion of thirty-five is a flat fee.
We have been, this round was hemorrhaging, um, uh.
Legal money?
Legal money, mostly for the counsel from Adam's office that isn't Adam. And, um, and, uh.
Employment, yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, we haven't even met with her, other than when we, um.
Negotiations?
Early on.
Yeah.
We, um.
Jay and I talked very, very briefly about one of the, the, um, things that settled, one of the police.
So, so the extra of twenty K or twenty-five K or whatever it is, we, we did have that at eighty-five, and then we had to drop the budget, last week we dropped by ten K.
In there, yeah.
Um, in the, um, actually, we had already hired you, and we thought, it's like, we have it on site.
Yeah, yeah, that was.
People know the easy questions, that's the very least.
That was the plan.
So, um.
Hopefully, it actually worked out very well.
It feels like, I mean, if you look at the, at the way that the legal, if you look at the expense reports.
We're in line.
Well, well.
Well, within.
Well, within, well, uh.
And so it might be the first time since I've been a selectman, that we haven't had to do a municipal fund transfer for legal.
For legal services.
Um, so, in any event.
Well, and we're in pretty good shape all around for legal services, and I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, so, but I just checked with them and see if it.
Exactly, I'll double check with Adam and make sure.
It is nice to have that buffer.
Yeah.
Um, that's okay.
Yep.
So, um, all right. I should be following along, right?
Um, in my ass?
In my ass, yeah. Um, I, I think I was okay with that, I think we're pretty much. My flat, that is just a little bit higher than what it was on the, on the thirteen, on the eight eleven.
Right, yeah, but we're, it's new equipment replacement, we're still sadly running.
Yeah, this is, this is.
What is the hundred K ARCA funds being used for?
You know, that, so when the, um, so, the, I think it was prob- probably almost fifty hours that they spend doing the cable mapping plan for town.
Okay.
So that's, you know, that's a big chunk of what the ARCA fund's being used for, and then we're going to be, um, moving this equipment.
I knew that, downstairs.
Downstairs, and so we're getting ready to put that out the bid.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have a TV for here, for Zoom, so you'll be looking straight forward at the TV. Um, we've got.
Maybe for me, it's not eighty for you guys.
Um, here's some furniture that's part of that as well, for in here, there's also wifi from the library that we're gonna be bringing over here to enhance, um, Great Hall.
Yeah, the wifi dead spots at all.
Right, to, to bump that up.
So it's, it's a ten K, it is in professional and purchase services. Um, over what it was last time.
Mm-hmm.
So what are we purchasing that we didn't anticipate months ago?
Well, it wa- so it wasn't so much that you didn't anticipate it a month ago, that, it was, it was more that, you know, we're looking at the, the projects that we have online, I'm hopeful that the, a portion of the money that we spend for Guardian is just for their ongoing maintenance, but a portion of it is to put aside hours for us to have projects done. And so, they have to, they have to.
Yes, there's, there's, there's commissioning and decommissioning, uh, we've got it.
The server.
Server, we have to get a new server, that the old one has to be de-commissioned, the new one has to be commissioned, um.
Then there's that old architecture that's out there, that's like, costing us money?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I'm just looking. I I'm just looking for more money.
Oh, I know.
Uh let me come up with proposals for the grant administrator, but I, you know.
All right, so the next one is a conservation.
Town clerk.
But um town clerk, yeah, I was good with that. I don't think anything has changed.
Yeah, the town clerk is relatively straightforward.
Um.
Um conservation, this is you'll see a major change here. Because, you know, I we we basically finalized the plan to consolidate the Conservation Agent and Conservation Support.
Okay, so the closing, there's six thousand dollars right there. The closing allowance, it will be one person. So it drops to six hundred?
Uh uh it it should drop, it should, on your form, it should be dropped. Is it not dropped already?
Still says twelve hundred.
Yeah, so that's the I I I've, yes, that's dropped.
Okay. Okay, and I know that.
Soon you'll be able to get those leather seats.
We'll put a grant administrator on layaway. Every month, every month.
How to do it? All right, land use, land use. So yeah, that was um down from last time and I I the.
Yeah.
Um, so, and I get the ten point drive. All right, um. All right, um facilities, um you know my thought on that. I I just really on one, two, thirty-four, the repair and maintenance and professional services. I just want a reason for that six thousand dollar increase there. Um, that's a, you know, a twenty percent increase. Roughly, um, why? Um.
Uh yeah, I mean, this is it's it's a.
I don't agree with that.
Yeah, uh I so I understand the board's position on it and like if the board makes determination that that's not something that we're gonna increase, then it it just since the talking to facilities, since the increase, since the addition of the of the the large addition onto onto the senior center. Um. The 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 feeling from the facility that they that is that the regular and order, there wasn't enough funding in there for the buildings that that needed to be overseen.
But there's some pay down to that that I, um, if my.
Other than the, other than you, if you look at what happens to these accounts year over year.
And and so I am good with the two and a half percent increase or a three percent increase even. But a twenty percent increase, I mean, we have added a building, okay, I I can go with that, but a twenty percent increase without a reason for is.
Right, yeah, it's it's it's.
I I understand the, okay, the the energy, um, but okay, you know, we have another building.
Right.
In in addition to what we had before, I'm and the prices have gone up despite the fact that we're doing the supply application. But in any event, I I'm good with that, but I'm not good without a plan for this. Um, um.
Where's the vehicle supplies from?
The the increase in vehicle supplies is the is in the anticipation that there's gonna be an additional truck. And so um, you know, some addition, like there's a little a toolbox and a ladder.
To be a part of what what it was before, so the the these are the little things that, you know, that make me uncomfortable. I I just.
I I also believe that also pays for gas.
Um, we talked about that in the meeting. If I listened to the meeting through the night part last night. Um, that it's gas, but if you look up here, we're dropping six thousand because we're buying a new truck. However, we are adding three thousand because we're buying a new truck.
And my whole problem with if we are buying out of capital expense a vehicle, why are we adding more money into the budget too? So it's adding a vehicle with a large expense from capital and we're also adding more money to the budget that supports this vehicle. You know, the only thing that I can see that it it should be taken out, there's a there's a stipend for the, you know, what is the stipend that we're paying for? Um, for that, is there like six thousand dollars a year? So yeah, that's that, that's line two twenty-eight. And that would be, that would be zeroed out, but the other one still push it way above. So I'm not really.
Okay, so I'm going to here. I'm gonna make a motion that we increase line two thirty-four and two thirty-six by five percent of what it was last.
The second round.
Two thirty-four and two thirty-six. So I can I make a, or either allow discussion on that?
If they're allowed to discuss them.
Yes.
But I would say that's less than the the rate of inflation. So that doesn't take into account the addition of a new building at all.
But why would a brand new building, repair and maintenance? Do we really need to repair and maintain the brand new building? I would not anticipate that it would need huge repairs in its first year. And without a plan, I I, it's not data, what I'm saying. And then for professional services, well, what additional professional services are we purchasing for the new building? Now, maybe there is an increase because we've added a building in, you know, um exterminator fees or something like that. Um, that that could be, because we do pay.
The uh all of the electronics with the with the um doors and the the lighting and the
which hasn't been properly maintained. This is, this is why we need a maintenance thing, because this kind of stuff is 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 I feel very uncomfortable increasing something and we're not even knowing what we're, it's it's repair and maintenance, but we don't know what conditions there are. So you're increasing something that we don't even know what the what the figures are. And this is why I've been asking to have some kind of figure so we can justify it. And there's nothing to justify it. That's my, that's my problem. It's not that I'm I'm saying anything other than if if I went to one of these other departments and asked them specific questions, they would give me data to back it up. Specific data to back it up, some of them, even more data than I would want to see in some areas. But that's my my problem. It has nothing to do with, you know, anything other than I know that we need to repair and I know that we need to maintain, but we need to plan and we can't plan when it's when it's all over. This is the 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 second time that I've gone through a budget and this is the second time that I'm seeing the same figures just increased by by an amount and they're still, I still don't know what what it is. And then they're, you know, asking for for other. I I I, how do you, how do you wanna deal with this, um Veronica?
Well, I have a motion on four and you have seconded it.
Yes.
And this is for session, so that's how I wanna deal with it.
Okay, so you're saying the three percent for.
Five percent.
Uh, sorry, five percent for line three.
Two thirty-four.
Two thirty-four and two thirty-six. Okay, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And police?
Okay, so I'll I'll make those changes that in that um probably about eight or nine thousand dollars.
I didn't have anything with police. Did you have anything for police?
Um, not the police, yeah, I've got myself and anyone passing down.
Fire?
No, nothing at all.
Um. Emergency management, no. The team communications, no. Building department? And you have anything on that? Any of the inspectors?
So we're done, or are we okay with the rest of public safety? There's a few minor things.
Yeah, I'm okay with all of them.
So the the one thing I would say, and I've, we do not currently have an animal inspector. Um, I have been in conversation, kind of played phone tag with the animal inspector from M H B, who may be willing to come and do animal inspection here for an increased fee. So I don't have that number right now. I my my guess is it's gonna be about twelve hundred dollars.
With the with the doing all of the things that we talked about, the barn books and the the
well, our animal control officer does rabies.
No, no, that's a non-issue then.
So it's really a non-issue. It's just the kind of the barn books and the the state requirements.
Okay.
So, um, uh, you know, I I I didn't do it because I didn't have a final number and I didn't wanna but I may be asking to slightly increase that by next week. If I don't have the number by next week, it'll stay where it is, but at twelve hundred, yeah.
Why did I think there was like a fixed fee for animals and stuff? Who is this thing? Why, why is that something around in? Um.
You wanna take a stab at that? I don't know. Excellent question. I will look up that though.
Look that up because there was something.
I do know other towns pay more than we do.
I'm not opposed to, because this is like nothing.
Yeah.
But I seem to remember looking at this.
I'll double check. I'll double check and I'll I'll let you know if there's some impediments that. I don't think there any need to discuss the schools. I will correct that number if it warrant to the one.
Hmm.
Um, so highway, again, there's some significant changes to highway that show up in that number that that I think Veronica was mentioning earlier. Um, the those come from, for all intents and purposes, two things. Number one, the addition of another equipment operator to attempt to try and kind of rebuild the staff in the highway department.
So because of the retirement, so that's the online five oh three, that's sixty thousand seven hundred ninety-nine. But not the entire change, but it's under operating staff.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, some of that is increases.
Right. Yeah, so that the the, you know, a large chunk of that is is turning that is is bringing in another equipment operator. Not in addition to the the retirement, we're gonna replace the one that retired.
Right, but he's very experienced.
He was very experienced and so, um, uh, I will say in the first, and I just wanna kind of put this out there for folks. In my first year, which has almost been a year, uh, a year, I I I think a year ago today, I think was was our Saturday meeting, maybe, or.
You're right.
Um, um, is the main thing that people complain about is the is the uh roads, yep. So this budget reflects that the excess money that we had is put into attempting to try to both beef up the highway department staff so they can do more patching and paving and dealing with culverts and providing more money specifically for paving, so we're gonna have more road paving here. So that's why this there's this large increase. The 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 bulk of it, though, is that two hundred thousand that's down in line five twenty-nine.
I really hate to take any money out of that loan, even for my
We've got about five thousand dollars that we could take and still leave it at a nice two hundred thousand. Um, and so that might actually bring almost to what you're looking for with the other changes of the.
Who did I read that they're gonna up chapter nine?
I certainly hope so.
It was in the MMA, but that was one of those plans.
They always hope for, I mean, we have a new governor, maybe she will, but I don't think we can count on it. And this is an attempt to kind of fund paving.
This is like them saying that they're gonna increase the transportation for public, I mean, for regional schools, right? It's something they talk about ferociously and then when it gets to a vote, it never gets passed.
So in addition, the the third addition to highway is the increasing in the salt line of twenty-five thousand dollars. So that came after com- comments from both FinCom and the Board of Selectmen at the Budget Summit, that we should try to incrementally increase this so that we're not paying out so much free cash every year.
Well, keep up with that. I agree and I am gonna say that I don't want anything touched in pavement management. I wanna keep it like it is and we need to be really focused on it.
And I I, as you can see, that the getting the getting the highway to be able to help the town more is one big thing. Seventy-five percent of my email for about that. So, um, all waste, it only increases the contractual increase in the all waste.
That's a dreadful, this is kind of one of mine. So there was an override of six hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand.
So that override has to go to trash always because it was an override, correct? Or is that not the case?
Um.
And I'm asking this question, so let me ask the next.
I honestly don't know if that's the case.
Because someone said that, there was an override for six hundred thousand and therefore that six hundred thousand has to always go to trash because we voted an override for trash.
I don't think that's the case.
Of the question was, if we voted an eight hundred thousand dollar override for school, would that eight hundred thousand always have to go to the school?
Right.
Um.
Well, for the school question, I think it's a moot point because the schools are so much to our budget. It will never be less than eight hundred thousand. It would never be less than all of the school overrides that have ever happened in towns and had that together. It will never be less than that, right? The 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 salt wave is a different question. But I I I I I do believe that you are overriding it and that we are providing you the reason that the that in this budget, we need that override. I don't think that's binding in spending in the following year. Because you can have an override for something that becomes completely moot twenty years later, you're not going to, that override doesn't automatically reverse.
Okay.
You know? Um, like if we all of a sudden could naturally teleport our trash into the fund, you know, we wouldn't, you wouldn't give six hundred thousand dollars, it wouldn't just go away.
All right, I I just wanted to.
But this is trash, kind of like the schools, is never gonna be less than six hundred thousand unless we radically change what we're doing with trash.
Right.
But I will say, it is important to note that that override is that funded a hundred percent of the trash contract time, I believe. Now funds seventy-five percent of the trash, eighty percent of it. Um.
All right.
Cemetery and parks?
Yep, line five seventy-eight. Did we get any details on that since the budget meeting?
Uh, I.
That's the stipend. I thought it was a salary provision. Um, and so.
No, I I I I reached out to John and left him a message and um sent him an email, but his is, I will say, his uh his secretary at the firm, that I, he was tied up in the afternoon, so. I didn't.
Um. Well, I will say that I don't support that. Um, I, it's a, it's a salary provision. And last year going to be, and it's a union.
When is the four thousand four? We don't know.
It was.
Yeah, he described it at the Budget Summit as going for the um uh to the times that the the cemetery, the burnt houses are hard to be able to call over the weekends for burials and it's called from from uh um. Assuming it's the people who need to bury. Assuming it's the people who need to bury. It does. Part of the job, though.
It's it's a union decision. I don't think a board can. Can. Command. Um, something that's tagged. I thought that needed to be bargained.
We did, because even when we did segments for the water department, we had to go through the.
Absolutely, I I I. There is a little bit of a chicken and egg question, which is do you go and bargain first? Do you make sure it's in the budget first? Yeah, I agree with you. There there's no way it could actually happen until unless there was a union negotiation as well.
Um, and I just see it opening a can of worms. Isn't everybody going to call? And um.
Jimmy from Welton?
I move that we remove. Line, what is it over here? Five seven V eight. Um, the other stipends from the budget.
Second. Um, this guy's thing. I would say without having. A conversation with with the union people, I don't think we should vote on it. I think I'd be right. It's opening up the can of worms that I don't think we want to. We want to go down.
I will say, I I don't. I don't think it came up in our discussions with with supervisors. At at our at the negotiating for how.
Yeah, but we, I know that when we did that for the water department, we did have, we did check with.
We did, absolutely. Oh, yeah, it did not go forward until I had gotten approval.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. And I think we should get approval from them first before we. It's yes, and I agree, it's a chicken and the egg kind of thing, but. We we made the water department. Go through the union. I think this needs to go through the union and then we can discuss them. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, housing authority, housing trust. So we did make that correction with the hours.
There with with that, I'm sorry, with the increase, but there there are, those are, those were like five hours.
Um, I just wanted noted that housing trust money all are underfunded. For the purposes of next.
Counsel on aging?
Did we make the longevity change? That um. Yeah, so we're good then.
Nothing related to the veterans aging, it's pretty straightforward. But that's human services.
Library.
I didn't have any.
No, I didn't either.
Recreation.
Recreation.
Okay, one seven hundred. That's eight percent and I think it should be four percent. Because there hasn't been an increase in hours and the hours have been the same. From two years prior to my being a selectman. And I know that because of the workshop. The hours that. We've marked, we budgeted for have been the same. Um, and so to say there's a change in hours where that hours weren't. Accounted for last year, but then they weren't accounted for the year before, the year before, the year before, the year. So, all far the same.
So what are you saying? That it should be just three percent?
There should be four percent, the same as every other department. And by the way, thank you for making those even for um, that is three positions. It's a consistency thing.
Yes, which was all with the board.
And so thi- this is. And just to, just to make clear, this is a um. Based on. The current. The 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 current recreation. Department head. Uh, getting a a colonist staff. And working thirty two hours a week. Forty four point two weeks a year and forty hours a week for the four weeks in the year at the. During the summer rec program. And that, and 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 I again, I I'm I'm not, I don't want to cast this burden on where there was a miscommunicate, where there was. If there was an error or where there was an error. But going back through time sheets, that is consistent with how the. The recreation director has filled out her time sheets since we've had Harper's, which is back in twenty twenty.
So, I will say, I remember this point. Where it was thirty hours a week for forty four to. Forty hours a week for eight. And which averaged thirty two a week. That's what I mean. But during the winter months during school. It's six hours a day. Because it's not an all day thing. And during. The summer is forty hours. And if you. Or forty hours a week, eight hours a day. So if you do the math, you come up with thirty two hours a week. And that was what's been in everything I've looked at. The entire time. Um, that I've been a selector and in doing the retros prior, the retro that we. Pay was for thirty two hours a week.
To get, to get that position up to where it should have been.
No, that was the hours a week. We we did move the class, but that's a different story. But um.
But I'm saying it was all part of the discussion of.
Yes, it was all part of the entire discussion.
Remember that.
And um. Find out now that it was wrong is. A surprise, that's all.
So the the other thing, again, I mentioned to Veronica, so I want you to have the same information with it. I went through back. Through all of the employee action forms. Since um Emmy was made full time. And they all say her regular hours are thirty two hours. Including ones that I signed, including ones that you guys signed.
All the employee action.
Uh, including ones that cried their sign. Before, they they all say ever since she was full time. Her regular hours was thirty two hours a week.
And I don't remember approving overtime and with years, that's all. Um, signing off on stuff and. I don't remember an overtime. Um, which is what that would be. Um, although. And and yeah, it was uh, hadn't yet been bumped up to the no overtime. Um, category, which is that, it is there now. I think there's gonna be questions to why this is eight percent and all the others. I guess I want to know your response on. My view, mine would be it's four percent. Because I I didn't know that it was other one.
But the data is saying that it's always been thirty two, you're saying.
Uh, again, just looking at the employee action forms and the time sheets that have been submitted since Harper's was instituted in twenty twenty. The complete, the the employee action form says the regular hours are thirty two and the time sheets say. Emmy's been billing thirty two in her non-rec program weeks and forty during her rec program.
I vote that I have the expense reported for. And there was no for the. Fine, I can't find the fine for. There was no negative. In that one.
I will say, I went through and looked through some of Ross's information since I talked to you. Before the meeting started. Um, and I ca- I can't put this in context. But there's a note in there from, I'm sorry, an email from Terry. To Ross. Saying that. Something to the effect of. While you can't do it all the time, it is possible to pay a full-time staff person. Occasionally from a revolving account. If, and then and then she said something like, so we will. They they spend down the the general fund line and then take.
I know what that's about. That has to do with the recreation, um, the. The assistant director. Because the assistant director, this was in a conversation around where we were putting the extra ten thousand. For the, that's what that was around. So what you're saying is perhaps that money came out of the revolving?
Yeah, I don't, the only full-time employee for the rec department is Emmy. So the the only full-time person I think they would be, could be talking about is her.
Because we were going to, um, there was ten thousand that was gonna go. To um. Salaries in the rec department. From our.
When we first, yeah.
And the question was, where do we put that ten thousand? How does that get accounted for? And there was a push against increasing. The funding for the um, assistant director. So. That might be what that was about.
I I just saw it in the in the in the FY twenty three budget. Bolder under recreation.
Yeah, because there was ten K, um, so the. FY twenty two, that this fourteen nine seven six, if you go back one more year. Um, you'll see that it, I don't even think it was funded. There there was.
Yeah.
This was a new position and there was pushback for funding. Um, and higher. You know, any higher rate, especially because. The, you can see the department head, there was a huge increase there as well.
So. If you want to change line seven hundred to four percent?
Yeah.
Then make a motion.
I move that we make the increase. For line seven hundred. For FY twenty four, four percent increase. To be consistent with the other. Salary increase for staff.
Second. Any further discussion? Or this one of those ones that we've been waiting for Terry to say?
That, I haven't seen.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was, that was a big discussion before you were here in regards to that line item in the in our meeting.
So here's another question. The next one. Are we using ARPA to fund that or is that being funded part of general fund? How did you put that?
I did it the same way I did with ARPA. So there's, it shows as a, as revenue in on our, on the sheet, ten thousand dollars from revolving.
Alright.
So we're we're carrying the full. The full salary of the staff person here, but in the, in the, in the recap, it shows the ten thousand dollars from revolving.
Are we good with that?
We're good with that.
Memorial Day, museum concerts. Yeah, we are doing the insurances. We are up for bid on that.
So it turned back on the ten. And that's just for the general insurance. We got, we have the increases on the other insurances that are included in the budget. The general insurance, we don't. We don't want to forget.
And the number that's here is from.
From last year. The act, it's the actual. Yeah, yes, it was higher than, yes, uh. The twenty thousand dollar I've drawn, so.
It was a big pause.
I'm hopeful that because we went out to bid, they'll match last year's rate. That's my hope. Um, otherwise, we are gonna have to, you know, what we, that one involves.
Okay, I'm good with that. Did you good with that? Alright.
And well, I'll bring the the amended version of this through.
Now, how much of this comes out of ARPA for health insurance? The, for health insurance, does money come out of ARPA for that? I thought that we were funding twenty two K for one of the two positions. The um.
Yeah, any resource manager?
Yeah, and that we were funding one of the um, fire positions.
So I was unaware of that. So that is not reflected. And I don't know that the fire has ever taken money.
So, oh no, they haven't.
I'll have to check to see if we took money for for Kelly's.
We probably didn't, because I don't think we needed it.
Well, yeah. As I say, it's in the ARPA's over any day, but.
Right, I mean, I didn't think we needed it last year because we didn't have all the position staff. That could have. Used that benefit. And so we have the money, the the money that we had put in place. Covered the staffing that we have.
Okay.
But. That was figured in.
Okay, so that's, you know, forty four thousand dollars and all that, it's not reflected about.
From two different ARPA.
Well, more will be revealed.
Yeah.
Right, five point O, ARPA projects. So we need to.
Well, I'm gonna, if it's okay with you, I'm gonna find, try to find a company that we can go out to bid for the for the buildings. There are a few ESG, you know, there's a couple of them that I'm familiar with, but I'm not knowing exactly what it's gonna cost. I'm gonna guess it's gonna be under fifty thousand. And that time I'm gonna proceed with my procurement. And if it ends up being over fifty thousand, we're gonna have.
You want to do something different now. Guessimate by it's forty, forty five at the most.
Yeah, and and for that amount, I can do it on quotes. And that means we can probably get something, I mean, we could probably get something started certainly soon, but we will find out the answers until. Probably later on in the summer, but. We can certainly get the ball rolling.
Um, the the other thing under our project with the stuff that's in that file is the whole thing. Um, is uh, there should be a reallocation form coming into the technical. For the um. Maintenance of the pole paths.
Okay.
I like this year is covered, so it is not critical to get in, you know, the first year of maintenance is covered. But since we're not getting the clicker, there was like eighteen K that we had set aside. For the clickers that could be reallocated to do the. Maintenance of the pole path within that, that whole year. I think that was like two thousand.
Per year?
Something like that. I I know, I have it written down, but. Something like that. I know, I have it written down, but it
Alright, I'll talk to Kathy about it.
I sent her that policy, um, right after the budget meeting, I sent her the policy. But that should be kind of
Five point one, town administrator updates to record.
Okay, so I have a few. Um, number one, um, and I actually am gonna be unfortunately because of the amount of votes in the other town, which is, um, as you know, we don't have damn.
Yeah. At least one.
I have a quote from Fair Corporation who did the last, um, evaluation and phase one dam inspection for the Mason Road Dam, um, for five thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. So I'm, I'm, I have requests, I have requests out to, um, other entities to write quotes, but I haven't heard back from them. If this is the low one, it's slightly more than my authority to enter in without the board of selectmen, so I would just be asking for for a vote of the board of selectmen to, and to enter into a contract for the phase one dam inspection um, at fifty-one fifty or less.
Do you want a motion?
Yeah.
Um, I move that the town administrator, um, be authorized to enter into a contract for dam inspection at, um, fifty-one five thousand one hundred and fifty dollars or less.
Second? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Um, the other thing is, um, um, in, in, uh, an effort to secure our both place in line and current pricing on the new fire truck that was authorized in the capital, by the capital planning committee. I would like to sign a non-binding letter of agreement with the company that builds it, just to hold our place in line until after the vote.
Okay, that was my question, then, that's the way to wait for the vote. Um, alright, so I make a motion that we authorize the town administrator to sign a non-binding agreement.
Seagrave.
Pardon me?
With Seagrave.
With Seagrave for, um, the fire truck, um, that's part of the capital plan to be voted at annual town meeting.
Second? Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, and those were mine.
You may sound like you have like fifteen over there.
Yeah, well, they were.
Monday.
Yeah.
Five point two, reports from board liaisons. Um, I don't really have anything. Um, I was, I attended a planning board meeting last night and I just had to leave. It was quite lengthy and I knew we had tonight, so we didn't really get to the points that I wanted to go to, but I apologize to the planning board for not sticking around for, for more. I wanted to hear a little bit about their discussions and a couple of the bylaw warrant articles that were there, but I think I gave it a college try until about nine o'clock and then we had to bow out. Anything for you from public safety?
Not really public safety, but other things, like the worthy.
The youth formerly called
Formerly
Formerly known as
Yes, the, um, emergency assistance fund.
Yeah.
The, one of the, um, groups that participate is the Abram French Fund. And that's, that, those positions are appointed by the board of selectmen and there are to be three people on the board. Um, with, um, Cheryl Simonos passing, um, we are down to one person. There was a resignation for a while. And they, they've been operating voluntarily, so now we have one. And so we need to post for two positions through the Abram French Committee. Um, so that it's not just Lene, who is, um, I mean, if she's not available, can't eat. Um, so we need to tell them for those two positions. So that's, that was the first thing.
We don't have to go for that.
I don't think we do.
No. Instruct us to vote, given we all agree as well.
Yeah.
They say we, actually.
Thank you to both of you for turning in your self-evaluation for us. So, um,
Be more painful than it probably could have.
Right, like a lawyer, I just have to say.
That's not a good thing. That is not a compliment.
Now it's up to us.
I know doctors that are worse, so.
Yeah, ready doctors definitely don't go.
The board of selectmen needs to complete our review by the eleventh.
Right.
I have a meeting, um, with, and those need to be turned in, um, to Karen. I think she's gonna be the receiver of those. And then I'm meeting with Kelly on Thursday, the thirteenth. So I'll review and do that, make sure I do a final thing under it. So, um, that's that, and we'll have an executive settlement on the eighteenth with air, right? And how do we wanna handle Supreme?
Like we already decided, you and I were
You and I, Supreme and we, okay, thank you. Um, and, uh, my third thing is, um, I think we already talked about candidates tonight, correct? So
We discussed that with TK.
Yeah, the stuff with TK. Do you want me to contact TK?
TK and I are on a regular conversation anyway.
Alright, um.
I'm glad we got the work done, that we got work done today. There was a lot of good stuff that we get, we get done that probably wouldn't mean anything to anybody else, but I'm very happy.
Yeah, it's a big deal.
It's a big deal. It's a very big deal. They can, they can do a lot of remote stuff now instead of having to come in and then they can
That's me, I'm sorry. I'm a little bit tired, isn't it?
Five hours ago.
Yeah, a lot more than that. Um, uh, the other thing is for his next meeting, it's my last meeting, the eighteenth, the next regular meeting. Um, we need to have on the agenda transportation. Alright, so all the things that I'm appointed to, that I will, um,
Make a big list.
Uh, I have a list here, so, um, and, uh, you know, so go from there, from that. So just know that that is the lead agenda item.
Why would it need to be an agenda item?
Because you have to
I don't think we would reassign them until we have the, until we have the first
So I will have my resignation prepared. Do I need to resign?
No.
If it's, um,
No, I just need to know what, what
The board of selectmen appointed, if it's board of selectmen ex officio, you don't need to resign.
Okay, so what the transportation task force, the one that worked on getting the second van from MOL, RTA, and getting us the MART round. Um, the board of selectmen needs to decide whether they wanna disband that group or redirect it. Because as of tomorrow, um, we won't have that money and we won't have money.
And I think, I think we should just disband the other group again.
They agree, they agree.
And the other piece of that is Emily and I put in for community one stop. We got a result back saying that we should apply for, I can't remember the exact name of the grant, but it's a mass development, community, um,
Community, uh, placemaking.
Community placemaking grant through mass development, which is a, um,
Fifty-fifty matching.
Uh, it's a fifty-fifty matching grant, so I would like consideration of a warrant article to put aside whatever money we can afford to use as a map. Um, because we wanted to do the parking lot back here.
In this town?
In the, that's, I think she
Yeah.
To add something to the annual town meeting, yeah.
To add a warrant article for, um, a map. It's a fifty-fifty grant and the town has to, um, put something in there. And I know that, that you can count staff time. Um, you can't count, maybe you can count volunteer time. There might be a way to, you know, quantify that, I don't know. Uh, I haven't read the guidelines, but it's due June, I believe, the due date is June. And I am not gonna be running, neither is Emil. So, um, that's one of the reasons why we really want the grant, because that person could do that.
Alright, anything else?
Do you want a motion?
Motion for what?
A warrant article for, um, setting aside funds for matching
I honestly don't.
You don't?
Nope, because I, I know that I'm not gonna have time for that. And it's something that we can probably talk about when we have a new selectman.
Okay, so I will drop that briefly. I'll send the mass development, that's all, thanks, but no problem.
Well, I, I, I don't know what else we can do, Monica. I'm not gonna have time for that. I've got a lot of stuff that's on my plate right now.
But I'm thinking if we hire a brand of minutes for that, then we would have funds set aside for mass of grants, most
I, I, I will say, we did have the grant administration position open for a while and didn't get any, we didn't get any, any, any pulls up the, the hug.
Three, right off the bat, and we cut the list to begin with.
No.
Um, all three were good. And the bidding was in town, and we can pass it first. And he was still two.
Yeah, I mean, I, so I will, you know, I, I, I understand completely where you're coming from and I, you know, I don't wanna just say drop it, but I, you know,
I, I don't either, but I, I, I can't do it by myself.
Absolutely, no.
And, and I'm, I'm not seeing much support, um, in any other area, so I, I just, I, I can't go anywhere. I understand that, but I'm saying that if we, if, if, if we make a vote to, to go this, this point, I can tell you right now, it's probably gonna end up on my plate and I just can't do it. That's my
Okay.
That's my thought.
Alright.
You know, if we had more people that would be able to step up and help us with a lot of other things, I, I would have a different, a different, um, opinion on it, but, I mean, if we a warrant article has to be written and it has to be in by when?
Yeah, I, so I, the, the, the warrant article has to be posted on the eighteenth. Um, is when the, the warrant has to be posted for annual time.
Okay.
Weeks in order. Yeah, so I'm, see, I, so I was actually, I mean, my, 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 my hope was to talk to the board about, about a possible warrant article to set up a salary stable, to put the free cash in salary stabilization. Or, you know, to, to cover the, the, the funding, to cover the, the, any colons and steps next year. That was my, that was my goal, to try to screw up what we had left to put into that.
But, but oh, for FY twenty-five, not for FY twenty-four?
Correct.
Because we put it in the
In the budget for FY twenty-four, in the stabilization account, we're gonna hold this free cash until one point five. But we could also do that at default, that's not something that's happened.
Right, and
But if the, if the free cash was gone, I would be able to do it.
Okay, alright, alright. Um, that's it.
So announcements and communications, um, so we did get communications from town council in regards to remote participation in meetings, so that was signed off by the governor, so we're continuing on with what we have until twenty twenty-five, because it was the easiest way to describe that.
Yes, I think it's great.
I think so too. I think we should be going
Yeah.
That's gonna change, I believe, on the street permanent, or we go that direction. Um, so also, town election, it is on a Monday, not on a Tuesday. It is Monday, April twenty-fourth. Um, the annual town meeting is going to be Tuesday, May second, and will be
Can I, can I say something about that?
Sure.
Would it be possible to set up additional handicap spots behind the building? Do we have, uh, there's only one handicap spot.
Right.
That means one handicap per person.
So we can make a whole roll of that right up against the building?
That's what I was wondering. Could we do that? It might, um, and if we announce that, it might make people who have mobility issues, at the very least, um,
More likely to be able to come?
More likely to be able to come.
The other thing that we had talked about that I still have to work with direct, uh, director is, uh, having childcare.
Right.
Um, so that's kind of the plan, is to, that there's to fund, uh, unfunded childcare at the rec center.
Yep.
Rec building for folk, for kids.
That's a great idea.
Be able to drop them off at the rec.
Um, I also have plans to talk about going forward, um, to put out a survey in regards to town meetings, days, maybe possible, what the public feels about the change of days, hours, what is gonna be, be able uh, for us to be able to have a better draw for that as well. Um, ZBA decision on thirty-seven Burgess Road. Um, I didn't really look at that, did you look at that?
Um, I, I know that the, um, the, uh, building inspectors that took them on got out.
Okay, yeah. Um, like I said, when I was with the planning board, there's been a lot of, um, planning boards have been on the job, there's just so much on their plate right now. But, um,
It's one hundred and fifty?
No, that's the, that's, that's my
Contamination commission has a public hearing, um, on, uh, four twelve, which is for seventy-five Pierce Road.
Yeah, I have a, I have a question about that. Um, I, I looked at that on the Mass GIS, that's totally N H S P, I think. Alright.
I noticed that as well. Um, we'll see you on four twelve.
Very well, yes.
Um, okay, five point four, next meeting is for eleven for the buzzet, budget presentation.
It says seven PM.
That is at seven PM.
In the memorial hall?
Correct.
We need to put something up on the website. Is Harrison able to do that in a timely manner?
She's been here.
Oh, it's from, is it from vacation? No.
No, that's, uh, that's sort of seventeen.
Um, and then four eighteen is our regular meeting. Um, that's when we're gonna be seeing planning board.
Yes, that's the joint public hearing.
Um, five point five.
Um, I move that we review and sign payroll and bill payable warrants, um, something.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then executive session.
And we'll turn from that, stomach expected session. Alright, I move that we, um, move into executive session pursuant to general law section thirty A, section one hundred and one, A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-직원 personnel. Um, the accountant and adjourn from executive session.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, Lori.